Wally, seven forty-five.
That's right.
Seven fifty.
You want fifty now?
Well, we're certified.
Oh, we'll see. Okay.
Okay.
You got it ready?
Okay. Good evening, folks. Motion to open up the planning board meeting of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Need a motion?
Make a motion to open the meeting.
What he said. Second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, show the planning board meeting open of April four, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we do have the agenda here. We're just for time considerations, uh, with approval of the board, we're gonna move a couple things around. We have a lot release for Katie Lane present. Any objections to moving that forward since it's just a signature?
None here.
Okay, so noted. Katie Lane, you're up. Who's got it?
I can do it.
Okay.
Katie Lane is just looking to release another, I don't know my, um, Katie, no, Katie Lane is looking to release lot seven, AKA eight Katie Lane, uh, map twenty-six, lot thirteen dash J. Um, we agreed at the beginning when they started releasing lots that the way we would do it is, um, for their eighty thousand dollar inclusionary fee, we would take that number divided by the amount of lots, and for each lot release, they would pay off another portion of that. I've received the checks from them. Um, they do already have their performance bond in place. Everything's all set. It was just one more lot.
Okay, and that is the, the proper procedure for dividing out for the affordable housing is by the lots and the device, so, so very good.
That's what we agreed.
So we need a motion to endorse the release, lot release. What number is it?
It's, so it's lot seven, and that will be in the future. I'm doing this for my filing sanity. It'll be eight Katie Lane.
Okay.
In the future.
Lot seven. So motion to endorse lot seven?
Motion to endorse lot seven of Katie Lane subdivision.
Okay, release. And a second?
I will second it. All in favor, say when I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous. Okay, we'll endorse this. Coming down onto that, okay.
There we go. You gonna fill in the verbiage here?
We're only doing part B.
Okay, not Form G. Okay, give me Form G.
No, I know. Yeah, we only, we're doing it, we're releasing.
Right.
Yeah, so I did.
Okay, got it. Find that down. Okay. Next up, flavor of the board. Uh, wanna hit this A and R off of, um, Wood Street? Seven Star.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And you're gonna record that or? Okay.
Yeah.
We're set. Okay. So, let's see, A and R plan if the board agrees, uh, fifty-two Wood Street. Bring that forward. Bill, you wanna explain that? See what you got?
Yep, they have them in their packets.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a.
You wanna do the intro on this, Annie? We missed, besides the, the shed on the, um.
Uh, do you mind just using my phone?
My name is William Paul. Seven Star Road, fifteen colors. Uh, split two lots off of the original parcel.
This is two A and Rs?
Two A and Rs, yeah. Two lots.
Okay.
There's one on Wood Street, which is a hundred fifty-two, hundred fifty feet, point two-five feet on Wood Street frontage, and has thirty-six thousand plus square feet. So setbacks, the circle on that lot, it grades. There's an existing driveway off of Wood Street. Into a different garage slash shed, which is, will be too close to the lot line as an existing structure, but I can add to the mila if you'd like right now, uh, before you sign it, if you sign it tonight. I can put a note that it's to be raised, uh, to relocate it or raise, um, that way we'll be more conforming. Otherwise, all proposed lot structures will be, uh, a hundred percent conforming with the setbacks. And the CBA, there's a small section in the very back of the lot, about two thousand five hundred square feet. It's, uh, got greater slope than required, uh, allowed for, be counted as CBA, so it reduces the CBA down to, I think it's thirty-three thousand. So it's still full, the full lot size, and then some, uh, of CBA, even though we take out the twenty-five hundred square feet of, uh, excessive slope. And then the second lot is at the corner of Seven Star and Wood Road, Wood Street, and it will be, um, a hundred and fifty-two feet on Seven Star Road and a hundred, hundred feet on Wood Street. And I show the proposed house, the proposed septic, we perked that back in August, um, October, October of two thousand twenty-two, and, uh, with the Board of Health, so all, all the two new lots have, uh, soil testing that's acceptable to the Board of Health. And we have, uh, thirty-plus thousand square feet on that, and a small section in the back, about four thousand and some change, square feet of slope area that's, uh, excessive. So we redacted, reduced that from the, uh, overall area, and we got a, a little over thirty thousand square feet of, uh, CBA, uh, for that lot. Again, the one hundred and twenty-foot circles are on, shown on all three lots. And the existing house lot, it'll be on Seven Star Road, has two hundred and twenty squi-, uh, feet of frontage, and thirty thousand two hundred and thirty square feet, and it's all CBA. There's no, no slope, no wetlands on the property. And it has a circle on that, uh, the existing septic system is shown on that. There's non-conforming front, which is twenty-four point eight feet to the, to the house, which is existing, so that's, you know, existed for over a hundred years. Um, that is something that's, uh, exempt. We have a twenty-four foot setback to the side between that lot and, uh, number fifty-four, Seven Star Road, which is the new lot to the right of it, and a thirty-seven foot setback to the rear, existing house. Um, there's a patio, uh, which doesn't count for setback, it's a gr-, at, at grade patio. What's that?
Here we go, patio.
It's a brick, brick, yeah. So, uh, so those are the three lots, and so again, they conform. I can put the note, I know that it's pre-existing, but he is planning on moving it, so we can put a note that says the existing garage will be relocated or raised, um, and removed, and I can add that to the mila, uh, and then make more copies for you.
Well, I, I think that's, that's that the existing garage has to come out of the setback.
Yeah, it does. Uh, that's what we were talking about, and there's no access drive on proposed lot fifty-eight A, where's, where's the driveway access? And then, and then just an observation, Billy, you cram these things in here. Why are these going down to fifty feet? Why are these, why are these lots narrowing down?
Just, just wanna get the area, get it back there, it's just, grab the area.
So why not put one house and, and make it a nice, a nice area?
Well, it's two. And we have the frontage for it.
So you cram. Yeah, it, it's just.
We're trying to get rid of the irregular lot stuff.
Yeah, and we.
What's so irregular about it?
Well, it narrows down to fifty feet, Bill, 'cause the, the original, you did these for years. I know, the other rat tails are on the other, the other street.
I'm confused because this plan was approved two years ago.
Where's this one?
March two thousand twenty-one. Narrows down to fifty-three feet.
I don't know which one this is.
You don't know what that is? That's Savory Lane in Main Street.
It's a pre-existing lot one? Lot one?
Lot one was a two-family.
Lot one was a two-family pre-existing non-conformant back to eighteen-something?
But the new lot lines.
You create this lot. How wide is it right there? How wide is that?
Fifty-three feet. So what's wrong with fifty feet on mine?
That's a, hang on a second.
And I don't see where, we have in the rules where you can't do that. You have to have the circle. I have that. I have the setbacks. I have septic.
I'm gonna quote three oh three five on you, where the lot's supposed to not narrow down to less than eighty percent of the required.
Get approved in two thousand twenty. You signed it, that's back at the meeting, you said that was the best plan you'd ever seen.
Not sure about that.
Oh, I can play it for you. It's recorded.
I think we, we parceled this eighteen-fifty lot off because the, the family had moved on, and they were selling it off, and actually, Bill Dark, I think, brought this plan in.
So who did you party then? I'm just saying, it's the same thing.
He was restoring, uh, a pre-existing non-conforming lot on a, on a historic home. I'm not sure where the project is at this point, but that's what that was for.
Yeah, look where his circles are. His circles are in the wetlands.
I mean, how's Savory Lane is a, it, it, there was a, this was approved twenty years ago as a private, private way.
It was approved two years ago.
No, 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 no.
Signed two years ago.
Savory Lane.
You just.
Savory Lane.
But this lot, I'm not talking about Savory Lane, I'm talking about this lot and this lot. You created this lot in two thousand twenty-two.
Cut off.
March of two thousand twenty-two. I can give you the date.
Preserve the historic home. Okay, so let's talk about your plan. Why are you doing this?
Because I want the area.
Okay.
I want two lots.
Are you the owner?
I am.
No reason why we can't do this.
I want, I just asked him. So you're gonna sell this off? Is this, are you keeping these in the family? What are you doing? Okay, now we hear that a lot, but, and then it usually doesn't come out.
It doesn't matter what they do with the lots.
I'm just asking. I'm just asking them that. So you got two problems w- with this plan. We got no existing drive, you got a garage that's gotta come off the plan on the, on the setback. Okay.
I can add a, I can add a driveway right now and I can add a note for the.
You can, you, you have a right to do that, but it's not on the plan.
Well.
I can add them.
The direction of the garage.
No, I mean. No, it's just one of the things that's gotta be on the plan.
It has, Jason, it has to be on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no, it just looks like there's no way.
No, you can. It, it's just that it's not on the plan. So you gotta submit that, and this garage has gotta come up. Um, onto that. Has Sam seen this thing?
Yep.
Any other comments? Was this always in your family or was this someone else's?
Oh.
I think this was.
Somebody else, the house was built seventeen eighty.
Yeah, this wasn't part of the petriscop piece, was it?
No.
Okay.
That's part of the, uh, stream.
Yeah.
I think we were on the board in seventeen eighty.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it was a board in seventeen eighty.
You're looking pretty good.
Our town is eighteen fifty. Yeah.
So I'd say you're gonna have to, you know, like pull the existing garage off, come back with the, um, with the driveway in here.
Yeah, I can't add it right now. It's right there.
You wanna see it on the plan.
It's gonna be on the plan.
Legit.
Be on the mila, which is gonna be recorded. You don't sign those, you're signing that, and then we get copies back to you. So I could do it right now. I mean, it'd take me literally five minutes.
And you gotta do the driveway.
I had that.
See so far.
Five minutes.
Okay, no, come on. You've been doing this long enough. You should have had it on the plan. Um, so you want, when's our next meeting?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Can you do it by the eighteenth?
Five minutes from now, if you want me to.
So we'll see you on the eighteenth?
Yeah, I will, I'm working on a state, unfortunately.
That's all right.
Okay, just so you're aware.
You can zoom in, Jason.
I can?
Yeah.
Might be a little, might be a little tiring.
Annie, you can zoom in on the eighteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, forget.
Let me make a note to send it to you.
Okay. So we'll do a motion to, uh, continue the hearing, hearing?
Well, which, uh, A and R wasn't a hearing, so, um, motion to put it on the schedule for the eighteenth? Need a second?
And we'll all second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's that. So next up, uh, minutes. We're different minutes. Approval.
I did not send them out to you when I sent out the rest of the meeting materials.
So these, uh, you wanna scratch that off the agenda?
Those aren't minutes. That's.
Yeah, that's a great.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just said I didn't send you the minutes. I didn't realize that when I sent out the meeting materials, so I wanted to make sure you had time to review, so I was gonna just add it.
We're gonna continue the next meeting as well.
Yeah. So motion.
Motion to continue the meeting, uh, meeting minutes to the next meeting on the eighteenth.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Wally, will you wanna take over?
Yeah.
Eight thirty-three.
Okay, do we have anything, wait, on updates? Do you have signatures needed and stuff? Anything on this while we get everybody here?
No, jeez, it's so loud. John's is the last one I need. Um, do you wanna do the Whitestone and the lot regularity, or do we wanna do eight thirty-three Salem?
What's the eight thirty-three? We gotta, somebody to lift him a couple hours away.
That's all right with you?
Yeah. Motion to continue hearing for eight thirty-three Salem Street.
I will be recusing myself.
Second.
Okay, we're seven five, if I can, aye?
Aye. Okay, who's, who's voicing today?
Good evening. Ian McKinnon with Jones Beach Engineers. Happy to be back.
Are you really?
Yeah, we got Pete on, uh, Zoom. Uh, so just to recap, um, we were here, was that March? That, that was March. So, uh, we were here in March, um, uh, it might have been end of February, who knows? Either way, uh, we came and we kinda explained to the board, went over, um, our initial proposal and explained that there were some changes and some outstanding comments, uh, from T E C, mostly focused on stormwater, uh, that we still needed to handle, so we took, um, some time, we skipped a meeting, and, uh, about two weeks ago, we submitted, uh, or last week, no, two weeks ago, we submitted, um, updated materials to, um, Annie and Peter for some review. So those items included an updated plan set, uh, which is the eleven by seventeen that you see in front of you. Uh, updated drainage analysis, uh, the goal there being that we've addressed, um, at least to our understanding, the outstanding stormwater comments. I'll let Pete confirm that for me, I won't speak for him. And, um, let's see, one of the things that we submitted, um, around the same time was, um, the applicant had draft easements, um, created for both lots, essentially granting reciprocal rights for access maintenance. The idea that it operates as one site, but they are two separate lots that we're proposing and we're observing the building setbacks. So again, the, uh, the easements are there to give each property the rights. And one component of that is because they're giving each other the rights to access maintenance, um, that kind of coincides with one of our requests, our waiver requests, which is for parking within the ten-foot setback, because we are showing parking over the common lot line between the two lots. There's also common access, so I mean, it's a lot line that runs through the project, but if you looked at it, if you took that line out, it would still operate the same, the site. Uh, but we did establish those easements, and that's partially because they're under two different ownership structures right now, um, and this is the cleaner way to do it. It's just have, um, the same easement, they just switch the names out and give each other the same rights, um, back and forth. So that was submitted. Uh, there's an exhibit plan that goes with it, so that will be recorded at the registry. Um, Annie, I think you said there was, at the first glance, there wasn't really any general comments on those, so it's more so on us, just the private landowners. One thing I do wanna make mention of, we shared a plan with, um, Peter and Annie, and it's more for our internal, some of the, the construction phasing, so I, I didn't bring it because I didn't wanna confuse the board, but this is anticipated as potentially being two, a two-phase project, as you can see by Brad's, he's got two potential phases coming in. Um, phase one of the project, and this is more so just for, um, it's a lot to come and do this all at once based on the build cost. So phase one would pretty much be these three buildings, buildings two, three, and four, the driveline that comes in. Um, and bas-, so basically, it'd be kind of, you know, you really wouldn't see this site in phase one. Phase two would obviously be the much larger building and the front setback with the office. The, to operate these drive-up units, an office isn't needed. Um, Brad operates the Nelson Street project the same way. It's all remote at this point. He gives everybody access codes. Yeah, and there's, yeah, so there's a kiosk, um, you know, maybe there's the potential, that, so that house wouldn't need to come down initially, um, as part of phase one. He might take it down, really no, you're not gonna spend money renovating it to use it for anything, so. Um, but we just wanted to let the board know that we've, we started, we're getting to the point where we're starting to think about construction phasing, so, again, this is the intent, this is what will be built out ultimately, but there might be a slight delay between the two sides.
And when?
I think, uh.
Twenty-three and potentially twenty-four.
Yeah, so the drive-ups will be moving fast. Those are, those are much easier to mobilize, so, I, you guys, those might get started this year. Um, and then the bigger building has a little bit more work that needs to go into it structurally too, so there's a little bit more planning there as well. But that'll just trail. For all we know, the, these, the drive-up could still be under construction to a degree, and then he's starting on foundations for the big building, so.
All right, so, uh, where are we with the, there was a couple of items that you guys were talking about, Pete? Let's see, is he live there?
Yeah, so there was, uh, let's see. Pete, Pete had a couple, um, so this is all, we had the, this is from the review that we got right before the previous meeting, and so we've addressed, um, those, uh, specifically, so, uh, for example, I could read through them, because actually I bullet pointed the ones that were outstanding. So, uh, T C comment number five from their, their second review, we put test pit information on the plans, so we added that.
Yeah.
Comment seven A related to storm, the stormwater standards, um, we made sure that to include the hundred-year storm information and made sure all the other storm, um, information was included. And comment seven D was about the water quality unit, so that was about trying to, uh, meet the forty-four percent requirement, uh, before the four bays because of the high infiltration rate in the infiltration basin on the project. Um, so we added those, those water quality units in, um, upstream of those four bays. So that was actually one of the waiver requests we had, and that's, I know we talked about that last meeting. We ended up pulling back, we, we provoked that waiver request, so we, we were able to put those units in, we made the elevations work, so.
Okay, so that, that waiver's out?
Correct, yeah, so, and one of the documents, the, the thing I'm gonna get to next is what I just handed out, is I, I did a revised waiver request to make it very clear of what is being requested at this time, so I'll get to that next. And then the last one was comment eight B, um, I think it was the same thing, a hundred-year storm event, so it's kinda two related, um, comments there. So, uh, if you want Peter to jump in now, that's fine, yeah.
That would be great, Pete, if you could jump in for us and tell us.
Sure thing. Yep. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Peter Ellison with T E C. I'm the peer review engineer for the planning board. Um, I've reviewed the latest submission from Jones Beach and the applicant, and I can confirm that the, um, stormwater model and analysis has been updated, and the design, the plan is now fully in conformance with the state and local regulations. So, uh, all of my comments related to the stormwater system have been addressed by the applicant at this time.
And have you reviewed the new waiver requests?
I have, yes.
Input?
Yeah, I think, uh, so Ian, I'm looking at the waiver requests revised March twenty-first. Is that the most up-to-date?
Correct.
Okay, so waiver number one was approved by the planning board at the March seventh meeting, so we, I think, don't need to really spend any time on that.
Yep.
Waiver number two is, calls for a requirement of an oil, grease, and sediment trap, uh, prior to any infiltration basin. Um, in my opinion, the level of treatment that is being pro- uh, provided by their stormwater system is, is really the highest, um, level that can be provided. So I think the combination of deep-sump-hooded catch basins, water quality units, sediment four bays, all prior to the, uh, infiltration basins, provides adequate treatment so that the board could, uh, support this waiver request number two.
Okay.
And then waiver request number three is related to parking in the front yard setback. Um, we did talk about this one briefly at the last meeting. Um, I think they have good reasoning for, you know, wanting those spaces to be toward the front of the site with kind of the general layout of the parcel. Um, and I, you know, thinking back to last meeting, I didn't think there was any real pushback, um, on that. And then, you know, the, there's four spaces that are between what is now the existing, um, storage facility and this new facility that will be developed in the future. Um, I really don't see any issue with it. Um, those four spaces are right on the property lines. Because these, these properties are gonna be interconnected, and there's gonna have to be cross-easements signed, um, and in place, I really don't see an issue with, uh, with having those spaces straddle the lot line.
Ian, could you point those out on the plan? Right there.
Yep, yep, so they're down, they're kinda down here. So the, the intent is, because we're, building number four is intended to be essentially contractor-style units.
Yeah.
Uh, so somebody that has their own business might utilize these, so if they need to park the personal vehicle and draw, you know, jump in a work truck or something like that, um, not saying that they will, but we're providing that ability for somebody to do that.
Okay. And those, that's the extent that three, uh, actually two waivers, because we already approved one.
Correct, so waiver number two and number three, so on the second pa- page.
Yeah.
Those are the two that, uh, we discussed briefly at the last meeting, but, uh, we, we decided to wait, obviously, until this meeting.
I was under the impression that the four spots was supposed to be at phase three, at the front of the building, to the entrance to the new entrance, so people could just pull inside, you know, sign a contract or get information and pull out.
Yeah, so the, the, so that's, so the space is up front, so the board approved the waiver for the.
Okay.
Parking in the front setback, so that was number, so this was approved, so we were able to.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
For the backside.
I, I made sure to note it, but it was, yeah, so that was one that, really, and we're glad the board was willing to make that, because it really, it affects ultimately what Peter had to review on the stormwater side, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we're looking at the, uh, number two and number three, um, in that document I provided to you. So the fifteen percent sediment grease trap, and then the parking, the side setback, uh, side rear setback.
Did, did we already vote on number one last meeting?
Yeah.
That, that's been approved, right?
Correct.
So we don't have to float that at all. I just, okay. I mean, I don't know if we can have a discussion, more further discussion, but we, uh, Peter has already discussed, we talked about that last, uh, meeting as well for waiver number two, that he's above and beyond, so no concern there. And then with the four, the four parking spots, um, on the lot line, I, I don't see an issue either. So I'll, I'll float a motion to, uh, accept all of these waiver requests, uh, waiver request number two and number three at, uh, eight thirty-three. Ian?
I'll second it.
Salem.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, presented and seconded for two waiver, uh, for approval of two waiver requests under section fifty dash six dash point two, hotel three, and section, uh, fifty dash nine point three, Foxtrot. Um, all in favor for approving the two waivers, as well as backed up by our review engineers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I show the vote unanimous? Okay, so the, all three waivers are now showing approved. And then, um, any other issues? Because this brings us right to the completion. We were asking about sightline distances. What's the status with that?
Yeah, so the sight, the sight distance, there was a little bit of back and forth today, uh, between us and, and Peter and Annie. Um, so we provided a sight distance plan, just plan view, uh, similar to the project, uh, eight ninety-five Salem, just down the road from us. Um, and I think, uh, somebody from Peter's office on the traffic side provided some input relative to speed data. Um, and essentially, if you, if you follow the Ashtoe Green Book, which is a common tool used for determining site-specific, um, sight distance required, it comes out to, I think, you know, we were showing two fifty in each direction, um, kinda using that example at eight ninety-five. I think it was two hundred and seventy-nine feet and three hundred and twenty-two feet is what, um, was passed on from one of Peter's colleagues. And it's, the tricky part for that is, obviously, we couldn't have turned something around today. That actually brings the sightlines outside of the scope of what we've surveyed on the project. Um, unfortunately, we're not on state planes, so basically, if I, if I go grab the state's G I S data for topography, we're on an assumed datum, so it would, either way, it'd actually be more work probably to figure out how to turn our, our stuff on to state plane based on the points we have, because we, uh, are tying into a boundary. Um, and we, you know, I think it was, the issue I've been having is, I, I've had trouble finding in the town code where it actually goes into the requirements of sight distance, especially on the site plan review side, since that's what our application is. Just because I, I think of it as, say, the two fifty, and the reason I think of this is because there is a small hump there, and I always think about the worst-case scenario, well, what if I go to three hundred and twenty-two feet and it?
Did you bring a plan that shows that?
So the.
By chance?
I don't, let's see, I think.
The last page.
So, uh, what I drew is, and I can move this closer if somebody can't see. We got our vehicle at the driveway exiting Salem Street, and then I basically drew a line in two hundred and fifty feet in either direction.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for example. Um, so for example, that brings us out to this area, um, which is just beyond the existing driveway actually, um, where the, there's access to the cell tower.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other way is down beyond, and in front of whether they are residential or butters. Um, there is a, you know, so the, the road, there's a low point in the road actually kind of in front of our site, right? So it gently slopes down on both sides, there's a slight hump right around here. So without, obviously without the elevation data, I can't say for sure if there's gonna be a sight issue. Uh, but I always think about the worst case scenario, if I gotta go back out there, get elevation data, check a profile to see if I have any sort of encroachment on that view. Um, I always think of, well, if I can't meet that, what can I ask a waiver from? And the issue I've actually been having is, I don't know where in the town code I could seek relief from that, because it's not really spelled out in the town code anywhere.
Have we done the traffic study on this?
Um, uh, what, in this site plan review regulations, uh, this wouldn't trigger like the need for a traffic analysis.
Do we have the traffic flow count? I think, uh, Salem Street's pretty high, but.
I don't, uh, do I have the exist, like the existing counts?
Yeah, the last traffic count, do we have that?
I know, I know it's out there, I assume if there's speed data, there's probably traffic data, but, um, I don't, no, I don't have access to the traffic data.
Okay.
On Salem, but it's, um, I mean, I think we've all driven it, certainly, you get some people that follow the rules and some people that don't on the speed limit, but, uh.
So what's your proposal and, and Pete, what do you, what's your input on this?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to this, so, um, the, as far, the thing that Ian's bringing up, whether this is in the town code or not really, to me is not, um, completely relevant, because this is a public safety issue, we need to make sure that we're documenting this all correctly. Um, the, the sight distance is based off of the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Um, the board, actually it was the zoning board that reviewed the, uh, the quarry residential project, there was an extensive traffic study done for that, that new driveway that will be created as part of that project. Um, which is where TEC gathered the, um, speed data to determine what the sight distances need to be in each direction. Um, my request to Ian is, is just to revise the plan. TEC has already gone out into the field and, and field measured these distances, we're confident that they're going to be able to meet these distances. Um, but just for record keeping and documenting the, the safety issue, we need Jones and Beach to confirm that and put it on the plan and stamp it and, and, uh, own it going forward. Um, so my, my recommendation to the board is to, um, include a condition of approval in their decision if they do move, uh, one way or the other tonight. That would require that the applicant comes back with a revised sight distance plan that could be reviewed and approved, approved by TEC or by the town's, uh, peer review engineer. Um, if I can sum that up in layman's terms real quick, I don't actually think this intersection sight distance is an issue. I just think we need to, uh, make sure that it's shown properly on the plan for documentation purposes.
Okay, that, that's understood.
Is that on?
Okay. Um, east of the site, electrical plumbing, inside corner, when we, uh, both zoning and planning, sight distance wasn't a problem on the inside curb, so, and there's nothing in the zoning regs, I believe, there's nothing on the plan, unless it's in such subdivision control. So if it doesn't need, which I think it will, so the question I have for Pete, like Ian said, we'll, we'll ask you for a waiver that doesn't exist.
Right.
And precedents have been set east of the site, same street, closer to, you know, that traffic intersection that tells us I'm troubled.
So, so what we're looking for is to document the existing, is, is what it is, as it is there?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things I was thinking of too is, uh, and he was nice enough to kind of give me the reference to the type of sight distance plan, so I kind of mimic, that's essentially what we're mimicking here, just a plan view with elevation information at uh, defined points. Um, I guess it was just, and, and it was nice, because the two fifty works, it fell inside of the scope of our survey. Um, I don't know if the speed data is different at the adjacent site, uh, obviously it's not that far down the road, but you would assume that maybe the speed data is the same and then it would kind of back into the same two seventy-nine, three twenty-two, but then two fifty was used, I, I don't know what, at what point during that process, review process, the sight distance was provided, but, um, it's just, I mean, it ends up becoming a, I don't think we're more concerned about, I mean, if it ends up being something that, yeah, like the board agrees needs to be done, I think it, we're, we're fine with the condition of approval to that end. I think it, it's a, obviously a monetary, additional monetary commitment to kind of get that part done, because other than that, I think pretty much it's just finalizing documents.
If you're just taking the existing plan and actually shooting the, the actual distances, how, how difficult is that? I mean, it'd be a single sheet plan.
It's not that it's difficult, it's just that you have to mobilize a survey, at least one guy. Um, hopefully, uh, based on the control of the site, you can easily expand upon, uh, the scope of the survey there. So I mean, it's, it's not terribly difficult in the world of serv- the surveying engineering of it, but it's just, it, it's a monetary commitment. Um, and if, if it ends up being a condition of approval, obviously it's.
Well, that'll, that'll actually, we, we don't know, you, you don't want to have this thing come up later. Um, you, you know, w- once, once this thing gets approved, then it's, it's approved with everything that's in it and the, um, so, I mean, that's, that seems like a minor
Yeah, I hear you, I think it was just, we were just kind of.
A minor thing with the headers out there, and if we could just get the, uh, if you get the speed data, the traffic count, too, just throw it in the same, in the same, it's always nice to get those, Merrimack Valley does those a lot.
Yeah, I think our issue was just more so, we were kind of just reviewing, okay, uh, what's been done recently, I mean, we had, that's the best thing they had to go off of was the recent example at eight ninety-five Salem.
And you can't use, like you said, uh, USGS doesn't, doesn't help you out there?
USGS is probably even worse, but there's, there's, you sometimes only get ten foot contours there. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, i- if we had done the boundary, would have been tied into site plan, uh, state plan, but, um, we're, we're tying in, uh, not surveying the boundary, but uh, it, it's, it was more so just, we were going off of what the boards reviewed and approved in the past and.
Has anyone else got data that you could use?
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering about, why didn't they have to do it? Um.
Not in our regs?
Yeah.
I don't know, yeah, I don't, obviously without following the approval process, I don't know if that sight distance thing came up.
So what are you looking at?
During the process and it just.
Two hours out there with a crew?
Well, it was an inside front.
Yeah.
And he wasn't deploying at the same at this time.
Yeah, uh, for, for the record, Mr. Chairman, I, um, I just want to speak up and say, you know, it's, it's not, um, required that this be field surveyed with topographic information, i- if you can have two people out there, one person standing at the, where the site driveway will be and you can take a picture looking to the west and see somebody that's three hundred and twenty-two feet away, that's good enough.
If that's, if that's acceptable to the board, and I guess I'll modify the plan and we'll get creative, we'll show a really nice stick figure of where each person stands.
Send up the flag.
I think a photo would be.
We could do that, but.
Yeah.
I will say, moving forward, we better have language for the next, you know, people coming in.
And I will note, with three oh one Main Street coming up, a big topic that you guys discussed the first time was entering and exiting that site, so it's not uncommon for us to talk about this.
No, we do traffic studies a lot, I mean, in fact, we've, we've done them before, uh, back and forth, pretty much every subdivision, that's how we know the traffic counts when they come in from Merrimack Valley, I mean, we get the data.
Yeah.
Paul Street, we always ask for a site, you know.
Yeah, we did in Salem Street too, um, uh, years ago.
I think the sub, the subdivision regs refer to the MH, the Mastiot Highway Design, which has now changed names, but.
Matthew in Sunset and the other one on Salem Street we did, because that was coming up around the curve too. Uh, we did the traffic studies on it, so, so that's a good recommendation, at TEC, we can.
It's a good code, code update, yeah.
We can, um, yeah, so, so we can get that, and then we, for the, for the board on, we can get, talk about that later.
Yeah.
So, uh, board members, what do you, uh, how's that sound for the solution to that problem?
Works for me.
Yeah, I, just to say, circle back, so I think the condition, the language that, uh, I know, and that Peter had some language in an email, essentially the same effect, uh, about a condition of approval, so I think we're fine with that, and I think the picture route is obviously easier, Brad and I will get out there and we'll put on a nice outfit and you can look for Brad.
There you go, put on the orange hat and you're all set.
Yeah, so we, I mean, that, that's something we can turn around relatively quickly and not have to schedule other people for, so if that's amenable to the board, we'll put some.
Well, let's see what the board thinks.
We'll dress up the plan and do it.
See one nod?
I'm good.
So, what do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. So.
Thank you, Peter, for that.
So how about a motion, um, on a conditional approval based upon that data that we just talked about for the sight distance?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick note?
Yeah.
We need a sight plan approval, a sight, a motion for a sight plan approval, a motion for the special permit for impervious cover, and then also for the stormwater management and land disturbance.
Okay.
Just before we get into motions.
I was just gonna say, I was gonna just remind you, we have technically three applications before you get.
Right, uh, this was, this was just the solution for this.
Sight, yeah, for sight plan, just for so long.
So. So if, did I get a second on that?
Second.
Motion for that conditional approval and for the required plan with the sight distance with the photographs on that?
Yep.
Um, Pete, that's, that's pretty much about it on that?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, on that, so did we get a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favors, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous, okay, we'll get on to that, okay, now, is there anything else before we go to the other, to the own motions, is that?
So was that, was that the conditional approval on the site plan application essentially?
Correct.
Okay, no, I think, special permit, we've, we've visioned the, the stormwater permit, the s- special permit essentially is same materials for the same permits.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so we're voting, uh, run that list again, motions for stormwater management?
Stormwater, stormwater management and land disturbance, geez, land disturbance permit as well.
Those are all filed?
Yep.
Okay, and the special permit?
They're all filed at the same time.
Yeah. And the special permit?
And the special permit for impervious cover.
Yeah.
Under the aquifer protection overlay district.
So, zone two? So we got four, four motions on this one?
Four motions with one being the waivers. So we're, we've done two, and we have two more.
That is on two, ready?
Yeah.
I'm double checking your application.
I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So the site plan review, section fifty thirteen dot two A one, that has been approved already with the condition, correct? That stuff?
Yeah, the two waivers were approved.
Okay. And the, with the waivers?
With the waivers.
With the waivers. So, make a motion to approve special permit for impervious cover, section fifty dash six point two H three of the Groblin zoning bylaw, as well as the, uh, special permit for pursuant to chapter fourteen, stormwater management and land disturbance, section one four zero five A. That's in the form, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approvals, all signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The vote unanimous? Show the approvals.
Thank you, thanks, Peter.
That's it, any housekeeping items on this?
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Oh, Pete, we're gonna contact you later for fees for conceptual, uh, reviews, just to get something on the schedule with you. So just, uh, look for that later.
Also, Peter, congratulations.
Boy or girl?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Can you hear us?
He's still here?
Too baby, too busy with the baby.
He's gone, he dropped.
Okay, so, last step on the, um. Oh, and a motion to close the hearing. Need a second on a, and a motion for the close of hearing on eight thirty-three?
For.
Yep.
Closing for what?
What a hearing.
Closing it, yeah, I'll second.
For eight thirty-three?
Oh, yes, I'll make a second on that, yeah.
Okay, somebody second that?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favors, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show the vote unanimous, show the hearing for eight thirty-three, Salem seat closed. Okay, back to our agenda, signatures, I think we went over that?
Correct, I'm just waiting on John's.
Okay, and correspondence for Whitestone, you want to just give us an update on that?
Yep, so you can see, so we've, um, excuse me, Rhonda and I have been going back and forth for a little while, um, as far as signage for Whitestone.
Yeah.
They had been doing construction, um, I know, they were like replacing their roofs and stuff like that, and so the contractors have put up, uh, sandwich boards on the Whitestone side where, um, it meets Georgia Street, saying that it is not an entrance and to not use it.
Mm-hmm.
Apparently that was working well, the contractors finished up their work, the A-frames went away, and a resident on Georgia Street said that it had gotten worse since those went away. So I reached out to Rhonda, asked if they could do that, they said that, I mean, rightfully so, A-frames are not permanent, they blow down, they get knocked over, they're kind of pain to deal with, and snow emergencies and whatnot. So, um, as you can see, um, their board is willing to install a sign at the end of Alyssa Drive before Georgia Street, saying that it is not an entrance and to use Diane's circle, and then you can see, uh, beyond the signage at this point, all they are willing to continue to do is to remind owners in their newsletters and at the annual meeting of the special permit, the board once again is asking the town to proactively contact the different traffic applications such as Waze and Google, to notify them that a town road, Georgia Street, is not the direction to use to enter Alyssa Drive, Georgia's a town-owned town road, and they should hope the town, and we, they would hope the town would be willing to use their authority to work with these applications.
So.
I have no authority over Google.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
I've, I've driven down this multiple times and viewed, isn't there already a sign that says no entrance?
At the top of Georgia.
Even, there's some, there's something right there at the br- that little bridge too, there's multiple signs, it says, on the way out, it says, this is not an entrance to, to remind people on the way out, and then on the way in, I think there's another sign that's already there. Um, I, I mean, I feel as though there's a lot of signs, there's plenty of signage there, stopping people is very difficult to do, with people who are gonna drive however they wanna drive, but, I.
Especially, you know, when FedEx or UPS or VHL goes in there, you know, Waze and.
Amazon.
GPS is gonna take you in that way, and you're not gonna stop contractor, you're not gonna stop, um, delivery services from going in there.
And, and I understand Georgia's, s- streets concern, right? I, I get it, that's, was built to not have people entering from that side, but I, I've driven it multiple, there are signs, signage on both entrance and exit of that telling people, do not use this, and even on the Salem Street or School Street, whatever it's, part of the street that is into Georgia Street, there's an additional sign. So it's at the top of the street and at the bottom of the street, I think they've done enough, I don't, but if they're saying they're gonna install another, another sign, I don't know where it's gonna go, but.
They've had meetings on this too, I, I wonder if that slowed down the traffic on Georgia?
I haven't heard anything from the resident on Georgia Street in a really long time. The last time I, the last time I heard from them was just November.
Hmm. Well, they're, they're working it, and if they continue to, you know, remind the residents, because that was a problem we were having, they had new residents moving in.
Correct.
And they didn't know, so if they keep doing that.
They seem to.
And they keep the signs up.
They're doing their due diligence, right?
Yeah, yeah, they are now.
We're not getting complaints from Georgia, but they're still reaching out and saying we're trying.
How about, um.
I'm all right with the way they handle it.
Yeah, let's, let's see what, what happens, uh, tell them to put the sign up and, everybody in favor of that? Put up the extra sign and we'll just monitor together and see if we can. But we don't have any control over Google Maps or, I mean, they can, but if they wanna try.
I mean, it's, I go through the same process anyone would go through when you're reporting an issue on Google Maps or Waze, like they don't even ask for, like, your email.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that'll take care of that, what else we got?
Um, I provided lot regularity calculations for, again, like I did with the other one, I took all the name and information off on it because I don't think it is fair to use someone else's plans with other testing stuff, but I'm sure you're familiar with this.
Yeah.
Um, so as you can see, um, three of the, lot four is buildable.
Yeah.
I just, it's very obviously buildable, um, but you can see what was considered buildable, what was not considered buildable with the, um, equation as proposed at, um.
Okay.
Just so, another.
We figured five lots are gonna get built there.
I know, but, pretty close.
Yeah.
I have not heard from them.
Yeah, which puts us on a, on a question, so.
I have received comments from butters that, um, I'll be sending out when I send out the meeting materials for the eighteenth, I've been forwarding them along to the applicant, um.
Well, the applicant used this as basically as a feasibility study, which I didn't like. To see what kind of feedback he was gonna get, I mean.
Yeah, it does, you're right.
So.
I, I.
He said he was gonna go back to, um, the owner, Minicucci, and see how he felt if he had to reduce the lots. So, I guess we'll just wait to see what they say.
But wait, that's, that's my point, so, so a couple of things, so typically, planning board policy lasts thirty years, okay? Is that when you get, um, a preliminary plan, it gets filed, and then it goes to a hearing, and it triggers a forty-five day clock. Okay, now they can extend that clock, but within that time, okay, the board has to accept or reject that preliminary plan, which, and which approves it.
accept or reject that preliminary plan, which, and which approves it to go to, or not approves it, to go to the definitive filing. Okay, so we have a live application right now, because it got timestamped. Now, one of the things that did not happen, and we discovered, Annie and I were looking at the regs, and we found out where this confusion was, okay, but the policy of the board has always been, preliminary plan goes to direct hearing, okay, uh, all the other boards get to input on it per the subdivision regs and go through, but there is a clause in the subdivision regs that says the board may just have an informal hearing. Now occasionally, and I can probably only count one or two times, where an applicant would come in and say, hey, we think this preliminary plan's ready, can you eyeball it, and then we'll go stamp it, you know, if we have to add anything, and that did happen. But, this one, I don't, I don't think we were actually intending on this, and if we are, as a board, policy to, we either gotta change the reg on that to what the policy has been for thirty years, or if the board wants these informal things, it still triggers a time clock, and if we don't reject or accept this preliminary plan within the timeline, it gets constructive approval as is, as a preliminary.
If it gets constructive approval, there's no stormwater management.
You got it, so it has to be, well, well, wait a minute, if we don't, if we don't say yea or nay, it's, it, as the preliminary plan is not, not the definitive plan, but the preliminary plan would get a yea, not. So what I'd like to propose for confusion, because we have a lot of new members on the board, is that, um, is that if the applicant wants just a meeting, the, put it before the board for a vote, okay? So we say, hey, do we want this informal, or do you wanna go through the whole hearing process, which sets up for the engineering review, and if you remember when this plan came in, that plan looked perfect for conceptual, which is why I was asking Pete if he heard it, that we need a fee. We used to have a fee with other engineers, you submit a conceptual plan, looks just like that, very minimal stuff on it, and it goes out for zoning and regulation checks, and it comes back, okay? And then based upon that, it gives the, the applicant, it's the most bang for the buck, we always said, and, uh, and then they go to the preliminary plan, and that goes out for engineering review. Well, this current plan is not set up for engineering review. They didn't put a fee down, uh, we have a, an informal hearing, but we have a live, a live plan because it was time stamped.
Is this live?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
We have plenty of time, and the board can ask for an extension too, I mean, it's not like no one's watching the clock on it.
No, it's just that we, we don't have an engineering review, so one of the things I was gonna suggest to the board on this, is that we either formally request the applicant withdraw the preliminary and convert it to a conceptual and send it out, or, um, submit engineering review checks and then an extension, so we can get this thing reviewed. But otherwise, we're sitting with a live grenade in the room, and we gotta do something with it.
Let's keep it continued, I mean, Annie's pretty, she's on it, so.
Right, but we still have to, we have no engineering review, money, nothing. No, I mean, I, I get your point, and I like, I like the idea, um, but this is for the purpose of the, the law, the lot, the zoning.
We've moved on from lot regularity discussion surrounding the bylaw change to the eighty, one eighty-one R, School Street preliminary subdivision, so we have moved on from that.
Okay.
Yes.
That, that was the same site that was used for that, correct? No?
We're not talking about that.
An identified plot of plan.
I didn't wanna put any names of anything on that, just because I don't think it's fair to, you know, whatever particular subdivision, like with the last one, it was an existing subdivision, but I didn't think it was fair to, you know.
So then at, at this time, we should just reject the plan?
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying about.
I think at this time, we should just reject that plan that came in last meeting.
And then when you reject it, you gotta put some reasons on it, so one is no engineering review, two, no stormwater management.
No stormwater management, nowhere.
There's actually, if you look through the preliminary submission, um, and some of the definitive requirements, it's not even close to this, and that's why this is a, a perfect conceptual plan, but we can set a, we can fire a letter off, a shot across the bow to say, please withdraw this plan, saves a lot of headaches, but submit it as a conceptual plan with your fee of five hundred dollars, but they already paid a fee, right, for the preliminary?
They paid.
Twenty-five, was it?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, it was, I wanna say it was like twelve hundred or fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Even better.
So.
I can't.
Yeah, and then we could.
So we'll have to reissue that, check back to them.
Right, so, so we gotta get that back, ask them to with, with, my suggestion, board, we can put it up for a vote, okay, withdraw the plan as a preliminary, resubmit as a conceptual with a five hundred dollar check fee, and we find out from T E C to review a conceptual plan what the fee is, it's a flat fee, it's not a, it's not a T and M thing.
I'm just confused by the fee aspect, because part of that fee is to pay my salary, that five hundred dollars, the way you're saying it would go all to T E C.
No, no, no.
No, no.
You're saying a submittal fee of five hundred dollars.
For the application.
View, and then T E C would still give them their fee to do the engineering part of it.
Okay, and.
To come before the board is five hundred dollars.
Right, for a conceptual, that's what the conceptual plan fee is.
I've heard that before for years.
Yeah, it's, it's been posted on the fee schedules, in the books, and all that, and, um, just a point of clarification, planning board fees don't go to pay your salary, they go to the general funds.
No, it goes to the general fund.
Yeah, just so there's no confusion with the, with the audience.
It pays my salary.
Well, no, not portion either, it goes into general funds for the budget, and then what the town budget does with it, but there's, there's no direct correlation between a planning board fee to a planning board anything, just to get that clear with the public.
Thank you for clarifying. So then I would say.
Any phone calls?
I would say, why don't we, if the board's amendable, right, I would wanna reject the plan.
Well, why don't we give them a?
We can't, we can't do it right now.
Right now, no, you can't.
It's not even an item on the agenda.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't even, this isn't even on the agenda.
We can't do it right now at all.
What we can do is.
We continued it to the April eighteenth meeting.
Right, but what we can do in the process is send them a letter on what the board thoughts are, which we did point out in the hearing, okay, and request them to withdraw the application.
We're getting into a bit of a difficult territory, this wasn't on our agenda to talk about tonight.
Well, this is on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're gonna just continue this.
It's not on our agenda to talk about tonight at all.
Yeah, so we're not gonna talk about this anymore.
You can reject them on the eighteenth, just like we do today.
Can't even talk about it.
So, based upon the conversation that we had the previous meeting, where we did point this thing out, and it was in a public hearing, did we send them a letter to request that they file a conceptual plan?
No, the board didn't ask for that, we just, we just continued it to the eighteenth.
Okay, all right, so then we, then we're done. Okay, so we'll bring it up again at the eighteen.
We wanna have discussion on, um, site distances, because it's gonna be coming up in the future.
Okay, then, we'll put it on for the eighteen too? Sounds good to me.
Is that something that's gonna have to go to town meeting?
Absolutely, I think it's worth it, just with how busy things are to, again, if we have a fall town meeting, we can bring it up a little earlier, but we have a lot of other projects that I think we need to get sorted out before we can touch something that needs to be approved at for town meeting.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean, timeline wise, if we, we can't get it done, done until next year anyway, we have things that need to be done now, I think it's worth it to hold off so we don't overwhelm ourselves, overwhelm myself.
Okay, and, um, and just one other thing to bring up, um, Annie, you and I talked about this, when, if, if you guys didn't know this, um, when we get a plan, um, a preliminary plan, definitive plan, okay, the plan itself, and Annie, Annie's been doing this, and before that, um, Rachel's doing it, it gets submitted to all the different boards, and since we have another board member here, have you been getting the plans and a copy of the regulation that pertains to your separate board, what you're gonna be looking for in that plan when you get the approvals?
Yes.
Okay, have you been submitting them back to us within the timeline of thirty days? Yes, there's a timeline on those.
Thirty or fifteen, we've, we're fine, we're, we've been doing what we have to do.
Thirty-five, I believe.
So there, there is a timeline on that where you put in writing, we hereby approve this plan, because that's where the, especially the B O S, Board of Selectmen, that's where you come in and say, we need fire protection, we need police, we need schools, we need this, we need that, what's the impact, et cetera, et cetera, and that was specifically put in, now, as the, as the boards change hand, um, a lot of people kinda forget, so I, I think if we weren't doing it, I would suggest that we do do it, Annie and I talked about this, well, we also have to include not only the plan, the plans go out, but they get a plan, and they go, what are we doing with this? And so we have to have a cover, a generic cover letter that states on, it used to be under section three ten, I think it was, okay, and in that, it actually says all the boards, and then it says, Selectmen, you're looking at this, police, you're looking at this, fire, you're looking at this, health, you're looking at this.
We do it.
And, good, so that, that should be going out.
Annie does it.
Right, but she wasn't putting in the regulation, she was sending out the plan.